Thank you and welcome everybody. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order for the special Southgate City Council's special agenda for Thursday, April 8th. It is 5:30. City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Barron?
Here.
Councilmember Avalos?
Present.
Councilmember Estado?
Present.
Councilmember Rios?
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz?
Present.
City Manager Houston?
Present.
City Attorney Salinas?
He's around here.
Mayor Davila is excused today.
Yeah, so for the record, the city attorney is in the building. He's just not at his desk yet.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I am number one.
The city council will issue a proclamation declaring the month of April 2025 as DMV Donate Life Month.
Thank you very much, and we're going to have Councilwoman Avalos read this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Mayor. So proclamation declaring DMV Donate Life Month, April 2025, whereas I, whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donations are lifesaving, are life-giving acts, recognized worldwide as an expression of compassion to those in need, whereas more than 114,000 individuals nationwide and more than 22,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting, whereas the need for donated organs is essentially urgent in the Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities, where a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to eight lives, whereas donation of tissues can save and heal the lives of more than 98 others, whereas organ donors saved more than 45,000 lives last year in California, whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, or tissue donor regardless of the age or medical condition, whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency room, whereas California residents can sign up with Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, www.donevidaCalifornia.org, whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at any California Department of Motor Vehicles, whereas California residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donations may visit www.LivingDonationsCalifornia.org. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that on this 8th of April 2025, Ms. Maria Davila, Mayor of the City of Southgate, and on behalf of the city council and citizens of Southgate, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as DMV Donate Life Month in the City of Southgate, and encouraging everyone to check yes on their online when applying or renewing for their driver's license or identification card at any DMV. So with that said, I can attest that lives are definitely saved, as an uncle of mine that passed away several years ago was a donor, and it was a real pleasure to meet the people that are still here because of his donation. So anyone who has donated an organ and is no longer with us know that they have given other families blessings to continue to foster those relationships of those people that received those donations. Another thing, everybody needs to get their real ID, so if you're going to renew, you've got to renew by May, so definitely if you are touched and want to donate, you can check off that box. Thank you.
Would you like to be able to speak?
Who are we presenting this proclamation to?
I...
Oh, okay.
But... But it's good to see you again this year, and I know you, you're here every year to let us know.
I want to speak in Spanish.
That's good.
Thank you. Muchas gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí. El año pasado no pude llegar porque me avisaron la última hora, pero hoy vengo de mi trabajo y me da mucho gusto estar acá. Gracias por el apoyo a la donación. Como algunos me conocen, pues soy una mamá donante y soy voluntaria. También este, la donación de órganos salva vidas y yo soy la prueba de ello. Mi hijo, gracias a la donación, sigue viviendo en otras personas y todavía, todavía una partecita de él sigue viviendo de los dos que conocimos. Ahorita esta proclamación que, que nos están dando va a estar expuesta en la caminata que tenemos en honor a los donantes, y este, y después he llevado al DMV. Hacen como un, un mural con, con el mapa y ahí van poniendo las, las proclamaciones. Y muchas gracias por, por el apoyo. Me gustaría que un día fueran, eh, yo traje la invitación para ustedes también que, que puedan participar, es un evento muy bonito, ¿no? Que van a ir a correr, pero para que, que vean, es, es algo, algo muy hermoso pues, y aprende uno a valorar lo que, lo que tiene, y, y desgraciadamente hasta que nos pasa algo pues valoramos la vida, la familia, y, y sí pues, ah, pues cuando uno muere ya no necesita nada, y sí podemos darle calidad de vida a otros, y, y pues mi hijo, 26 años, todavía sigue viviendo en alguien más, y, y pues todos podemos registrarnos, pero ser donante es un privilegio, así que pues solo Dios sabe, hagamos nuestra parte, registremos, y si no sienten confianza en el sistema porque alguno pues es una decisión personal, pero si no sienten confianza de registrarse, hablen con su familia, qué le gustaría el día que, que se vaya, eh, de todos modos pues no hay de otra, ah, ir a volverte polvo o darle vida a alguien más, y es un, es un, un honor, yo para mí, es una bendición que mi hijo siga viviendo, y, no, no olvidamos nunca pero, eh, me ayuda a seguir adelante, saber que ayudó a otros, que sigue vivo en alguien más.
Can you paraphrase that, were you able to do that?
Is that her kid when she was little?
Yeah. He died.
At that age?
It's not recording, you might want to pause, yeah. Can, can we just go to the podium if, if you can just paraphrase it into the podium? While he's getting that ready, you might want to just come up here.
Yeah, I don't know why she would not come.
She wanted to thank you guys for the proclamation. She also wanted to, you know, say that her son's still living after so many, 20, what's that? After 26 years, her son's still living in someone because they decided to donate. She also wanted to say like, you know, reach out, hey, make sure that people die, and, you know, make sure that people sign up and, and mark that checkbox to say, hey, I want to be a donor. She wanted to share that information with, with you guys. When we die, we don't need anything, we could give someone the opportunity and somebody quality of life. When her son passed away, they didn't have the, the, that pink dot, there was no registry. She wanted him to continue living, even if it was in someone else's. Thanks for the donation, there's people that are still alive.
We didn't get her name.
Her name's Eva Pérez. And her son's name's Hernán, or was Hernán? Hernán, I spused him.
Muchas gracias por estar aquí hoy con nosotros, señora Pérez. Thank you for being here with us today again, Ms. Pérez. My first year on council, you were here and you gave us the little pins, los, los, los little pins que dice para donar vida, so I still remember your story from the first year I was here, so thank you for being here with us today.
Thank you.
Gracias por venir, y yo también, you know, más de 25 años la licencia donor, y, pero es importante, dijo un evento que van a estar caminando.
Tenemos la caminata el 26 de abril, es donde vamos a llevar la, la proclamación, y ahí hacen un mural, y ahí las pone todos como un mapa y las van poniendo.
Lo va a dar esa información para informarlos, sí, verdad?
Ya hacen las tarjetas, cuando traje todas para el request, ahí tienen la información porque yo ya no las tengo.
Okay, okay.
Pero, pero, como si quieren pueden volver a mandar el número y pueden, para que se registren para, para llegar, y, y este, es una aventura muy bonita.
Sí, uno no sabe cuándo lo va a necesitar, ¿verdad?, también, ¿verdad?, eso, claro.
So, what she said, there's going to be a walk on the 26th, April 26th, and so that's where she's going to also take the proclamation. So the family that's coming is the family that received the transplant?
Yeah. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I have number two.
City Council will issue a proclamation declaring the month of April 2025 as Autism Awareness Month.
Thank you, and reading this proclamation will be Councilmember Gilhart-Totem.
Yes, thank you so much, this one is very near and dear to me, having a grandson who's on the spectrum. Whereas the month of April has been designated to spread awareness about autism acceptance and promote inclusion and connectedness for people with autism, whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a complex developmental disability that affects differently and usually appears by age two or three, whereas ASD refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social, emotional, communication, and motor skills, repetitive behavior, speech, nonverbal communication, sensory sensitivities, and difficulty with making eye contact, whereas the color blue symbolizes support for individuals on the autism spectrum and their families, whereas an autism symbol for 2025 and autistic pride day is represented by the rainbow infinity symbol intended to represent the diversity of autistic people and the infinite possibilities and variations within the autistic community. Whereas a person with autism can have a distinct set of strengths and challenges of which they learn, think, and problem solve. People with ASD may require significant, significant assistance in their daily lives, while others may require less and in some cases live entirely independent without assistance. Whereas although there is no cure for autism, research reveals that high-quality early intervention and improved learning, communication, and social skills as well as underlying brain development now therefore be proclaimed on this 8th day of April 2025 that Mayor Maria Davila of Southgate on behalf of the city council and citizens do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Autism Awareness Month, and encourage residents to become aware of autism indicators, seek early intervention, and support those living with autism, signed by the mayor of Southgate, Maria Davila.
And receiving this is Camacho.
I know him, he's very much involved, welcome.
Thank you. So everyone in the room, thank you. Thanks for having me up here, thank you for the proclamation. This past Sunday, we celebrated our fifth annual Autism Awareness Event at Southgate Park, Henry Gonzalez Auditorium. Some years back, as some of you may know, I approached then Chief Davis and Captain Arakawa and asked if we could do a patch or something similar to the pink patch to bring awareness to, to autism. Having a daughter on the spectrum and now a nephew who's also on the spectrum, as you said, sir, it's, it's very near and dear to my heart, and I remember when my daughter was, was diagnosed, feeling helpless, feeling like I didn't know what to do next, and I remember thinking, you know, here I am, a law enforcement professional, I'm educated, college degree, you know, have money, have all these things, and, and I feel this helpless and this hopeless, and I started thinking about our community, and I started thinking about the working families here in Southgate who are not from here, who've come from other countries, who don't speak the language, who are working two and three jobs, who don't have all of the resources that I have. How must they feel when they realize that their son or daughter or both are different, and they don't know why, and they don't know what it is, or what causes it, or what to do? And so that drove me to try to get the word out as best I can to our community that it's okay, it's okay to be autistic, it's okay to have an autistic family member or loved one, and not only is it okay, but they should be celebrated and, and accepted, and there are resources out there, and so that's what our event is about, and we've had the regional center come out every year, they are the experts, and my daughter was diagnosed by the regional center and has received resources since then and probably will for, for the remainder of her adult life, and so it's important to me to connect our community to those resources. With that in mind, in the coming days, we're actually going to be rolling out kind of a two-in-one program that I'll share very briefly, I don't, I don't want to take up too much of your time, with the assistance of our, our crime prevention specialist, Sean Paulos, we've put together, first I'll talk about this sticker, and essentially what it says is the person with special needs lives here, and we're going to be going on our social media pages, and I'm going to be explaining a little bit about what this is and what it isn't, but firstly what it is, is it a sticker that our residents can put either on their front door, a window next to the front door, or displayed somewhere prominently at their residence, so that if we should ever have to respond to their residence, our officers will see someone with special needs lives in this home. If that's not exclusive to autism, we could have someone who's of speech challenge, hearing challenge, sight challenge, there could be other issues going on, but we want our officers to have a heads up that when we contact the folks at this residence, if we meet with some resistance, or if we meet with someone who isn't reacting or responding to law enforcement the way we think that they should, maybe they're not being uncooperative, maybe there's something else going on, and this will be a huge indicator. The other thing that I'm going to ask our public to do is there's going to be a registration form that's going to accompany this sticker. It's optional, it's not mandatory, however, I'm going to be as persuasive as possible in asking that they fill out that registration form, and the reason for that is it gives them an added layer of assistance in that the information that they put on that registration form will be entered into our CAD, our computer-aided dispatch system, so not only will the officer see this hopefully when they arrive, but before they even get there, a, a flag will come up on their computer screen, so as they're on their way to that call, they know that they're going to potentially encounter someone in that location with some special needs. And I think that that just affords our residents an added layer of comfort, and it gives our officers that, that, that heads up and that early warning so that they can tailor their response accordingly. I'm also going to make it very clear, because at the end of the day, I am a police officer at heart, what this isn't is a get out of jail free card, and it's not, it's not a, an excuse from complying with or following officers' directions, but it does allow the officers that the, the ability to be a little more flexible in their response, understanding that the folks that they're dealing with may not have the same capacity that they do to follow directions and to understand these things, and so they can, they can tailor make their approach. And very quickly, the second is what's called the blue envelope, and several police departments locally and all over the, the country are already using this, and essentially what this is, is it can be placed inside of a vehicle, and it's not just for the driver of the vehicle, but also for passengers. For those who have been pulled over by the police before, you know, the lights, the siren, depending on the time of day, for those on the autism spectrum specifically, it, it can be intimidating and it can, I've seen my daughter have full-on meltdowns, I, I thought I was doing the right thing, and I took her to a movie one time, and the previews came on and she freaked out, she lost it because it was just so loud, and I didn't understand why at the time, but loud noises are, are a trigger for her. And so again, the air horn, the sirens, the lights, it can be a lot for someone, it can be a little bit of stimulation overload. So what this allows that person to do is when the officer walks up to the car, they can hand the officer this envelope, which will contain their license, registration, or other pertinent info. There's also some notes to the officer once they receive this, and there's a box here where the user can fill out their name, emergency contact phone numbers, and write down a few notes about themselves. I'm hard of hearing, I can't speak, I only use sign language, I'm on the autism spectrum, or any number of things so that the officer knows, ah, okay, when they get this, again, they can tailor make their approach. But again, what this isn't, is this isn't a get out of jail free card, or hey, you, we're not going to give you a ticket for blowing that red light, you know, you still have to follow the law, but again, it'll give the officers some information that they wouldn't otherwise have, and so these are also, both of these things are going to be made available at the police department, folks can come into the front counter, request either or both of these, along with the registration form, and we will make sure that those get entered into the CAD system, and that folks can display these prominently on their residences, or keep these in their vehicles, and, and again, that's just one more step that we're taking as a police department to outreach to our, our development, developmentally-challenged community, whatever that may be, but specifically autism. So with that, thank you again for the proclamation, it means so much to me personally and professionally, I truly appreciate the, the council and the city recognizing, you know, these members of, of our community and making them feel equal and not, and not less than, so thank you very much.
We might consider having, just I'll make a video with a lot of this information so that we can have it on our various social media pages and, because this is not enough, we've got to get that, the message out, and I completely understand, I know my grandson, you know, it's not like we have to teach them how to react, it's, we have to learn how to deal with the situations, and I remember when my wife turns the blender on and my grandson just losing it, and if he knows it's going to be on, it's okay, but it's when, you know, it's like, it's too noisy, I mean, and it just goes downhill from there, and we learned, we're the ones who had to learn how to address these things, so I appreciate the presentation, and hopefully we can...
You need to go to the mic? My, my daughter has come with me years prior, some of you guys know, I just want to report, she's 19 years old, she's attending junior college, and since her mom and I both work, she's actually learned to navigate public transportation, and she's doing that independently, getting herself to and from school, and she's getting straight A's right now, so.
Awesome.
So these things work, so thank you.
Yes. Yeah, thank you Mayor. Captain Camacho, thank you for taking a leadership role with this matter, autism, I mean, I know families that, that struggle with challenges, you know, it's not easy raising a family when you have somebody that has autism, so bringing these resources to community, and then this, this is really fantastic, I, I, you know, I know it, so hopefully people sign up for it so that our police department has a, a better way of, you know, approaching situations, so thank you for, for your effort, really appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, I have number three, please.
City Council will issue a proclamation declaring the month of April 2025 as DMV
City Council will issue a proclamation declaring the month of April 13 through the 19th, 2025 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Thank you. And reading the proclamation would be Councilmember Alreis.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Maron. Okay, this is a proclamation declaring National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week from April 13th to the 19th of 2025. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who telephone the Southgate Police Department Communication Center. Whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Public safety dispatchers of the Southgate Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals. Whereas each public safety dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of his or her job in the past year. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this eighth day of April 25th that I, the Mayor Maria Davila, City of Southgate, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens, do hereby declare the week of April 13th through the 19th of 2025 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Southgate in honor of our public safety dispatchers whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
Thank you. And receiving this will be Lieutenant Brown. And Suzanne, come on up. You have, you want to say anything before we come up?
You're a dispatcher. How do you not want to say something?
I got to say that they have a really tough job. I think it's more difficult than being a police officer. Being out in the street, you use all your senses. You've got sight and hearing, all this different stuff to put together what's going on. They have to do that with just talking, right? Asking all these right questions. It's a very difficult job. I really take my hat off to them. They work very hard to get that information. They're our police officer's lifeline on the street, paying attention to everything we do. So if it wasn't for them, we couldn't do what we do. So we really appreciate all their hard work.
If I may to, if I may say some words too. I also want to thank our dispatchers because they do a phenomenal job. Last year, they took something like 45,500 calls for service that they documented. And that's not to include the several hundred calls that they take and they have to transfer to other agencies or other departments. So they do a really good job. And like Sam said, they are the lifeline for our police officers and community members that are experiencing crisis. So thank you for everything that you do. You are our angels. So thank you.
One more.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number four, please.
The City Council will issue a proclamation declaring the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month.
Thank you. And I will be reading this proclamation declaring Fair Housing Month, April 2025. Whereas one of the greatest freedoms enjoyed by the Americans is the freedom to live in a home of one's choice. Whereas the promise made to us by the nation's fair housing law, which requires that all people be treated equal in connection with the sale and rental of housing regardless of race, color, national origin, sex, gender, identity, disability, sexual orientation, marital status, age, family status, or religion. Whereas the years mark the 57th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act, the original legislation targeting the elimination of housing discrimination in America. Whereas since the adoption of the fair housing legislation in April of 1968, April has been designated Fair Housing Month during which each year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Fair Housing Foundation organize events and activities to focus attention on the issue of equal opportunity in housing. And whereas during the month of April and in celebration of Fair Housing Month, each resident of the City of Southgate is besieged to support efforts to put into practice the principles of freedom, justice, equality upon which this great nation was formed. Now therefore, it be proclaimed on the eighth day of April 2025 that I, Maria Davila, Mayor of the City of Southgate, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens, do here declare the month of April as Fair Housing Month and encourage all residents to support the fair housing laws and focus attention on this issue of equal opportunity for housing. So receiving this proclamation will be Carol.
So they all came in with a stand-in. How did you figure that? Well, you came in as a stand-in.
I did too, yes.
Good evening. Here is Cindy Guzman, and she's going to receive the proclamation for the Fair Housing Foundation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hello. So my name is Cindy Guzman. I am the Fair Housing Specialist with the Fair Housing Foundation. So I want to thank you for this opportunity to have our appreciation of the city for joining and celebrating Fair Housing Month and acknowledging the importance. Now, more than ever, it is crucial to support our communities protecting their housing rights. We are deeply grateful for the city's funding as well as the support from the City Council members and dedicated staff, which allows us to continue providing these services. We are proud to represent the City of Southgate as, you know, fair housing providers and look forward to another year of working together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just a quick story about, you know, the fair housing, something that I learned recently. There was a story that I was reading about a family that was trying to purchase a home back in the 60s. And it was an African-American family. When they went to go purchase it, they were telling them, "Sorry, the house is sold already." And this group decided they're going to start a sting operation and send a white family to go out and visit the same home. And they were like, "Yeah, of course it's still available. Let's do it." They processed the paperwork. The house was sold, but the African-American family showed up. That family fought for their rights to be able to purchase that home in court. And that family was actually Cory Booker's, Senator Cory Booker's mother and father, who fought for their rights to be able to purchase that home when they were first moved there. And it's just beautiful to know that Senator Booker just stood up for 25 and a half hours telling the stories of American people all over this country and just the way his mother did, stand up and fought for, you know, all the people that needed fair housing at that time. So I just wanted to tell that quick story because I was reading about him, and I thought that was just an amazing footnote in his development in his life. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, close session?
Item number one, pursuant to government code section 54956.9A, 54954.9B, 3C. A, Eric Arteaga versus City of Southgate et al. B, Berta Quintero versus City of Southgate et al. C, Dulce Vargas versus City of Southgate et al. D, Leticia Delgado versus City of Southgate. Item two, pursuant to government code section 54957.6. Agency representation, Rob Houston, City Manager, Unrepresented Employees, Top Management/Department Directors/Hourly Employees. Employee organizations are Southgate MEA, Southgate PMMA, Southgate DMA, Southgate PMA, and Southgate POA. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, is there anything you'd like to add regarding close session on item one and two?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, we do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here in the audience would like to comment on item number one and two for close session? Seeing none, any emails, Madam Clerk?
No emails.
No? Okay, we'll go ahead and go into close session now.
Clerk, we're, go ahead and start with, come back from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, anything you'd like to report?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Rice, Mayor. Item number one, conference Leo counsel, there are four cases that were discussed in closed session. I'll discuss each one of them and then report out jointly. Eric Arteaga is an employment law case filed by a former employee against the city of Southgate. Bertha Quintero is a slip and fall personal injury case based on a raised sidewalk on Hunt Avenue. Gil Sevargas also raised sidewalk on St. James Avenue. And Letizia Delgado also allegedly raised sidewalk on 8635 Madison Avenue. These are all suits that were filed in court and on a motion that was made by Councilmember Thon, seconded by Vice Mayor Barone, and on a vote of four to zero, the city council authorized the defense of those lawsuits. On item number one, conference labor negotiator, there was very brief and generic conversation had with the city manager with respect to the topic of labor negotiation and its impact on the associations. There was no discussion, no action taken in closed session with respect to that discussion. And that completes my report.
Thank you. And just for the record, I want to make a correction. The conference with labor negotiators was item number two.
I'm sorry?
It was item number two.
What did I say?
It's in item number one.
Oh, no, thank you. Item number two. The four cases were item number one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody here in the audience would like to make a comment regarding any of the items on closed session? Come up. Please state your name.
Yes, Chingus Dominguez, resident of Southgate. So for item number one, I mean, this is just classic city attorney hack sort of business that we can expect from our city attorney, you know, four legal cases, lawsuits against the city, and he refuses to share with us what these lawsuits, you know, the payouts and settlements, how much they're asking for. We can't even get that from our city attorney. It just shows you just how wretched this man is with his disregard for the residents. For item two, this conference with labor negotiator, where it says unrepresented employees and employee organizations. So I want to tie this into the utility users tax. I was talking with, you know, our old monkey, Councilmember Gil Hurtado, and I, we were talking about the utility users tax, and he was telling me, oh, yeah, we got to have the utilities users tax so we can pay, you know, these, you know, these percentage increase for compensation and salary for our city hall staff. And in my mind, I'm thinking to myself, oh, no, no, fuck that. No, we're not, we're not doing that. The utility, see, I didn't jump on board for us to have a utility users tax to pay for city hall staff salary pay increases and compensation. No, the utility users tax be used for three things. One, grow the general fund. Two, pay our bills. And then three, take on big projects like the fucking courthouse that's been vacant for the past, what is it, 20 years? The football field that our kids have been dreaming about for the past 20 some odd years? And then these horrendous streets and roads that these big street renovation pavement projects, that's where our general, our utility users tax should be going, going towards. And the thing that I want to say to the council members and to our city manager, you guys need to doze the shit out of our city hall and take an Elon Musk approach with our city hall staff. I'm finding out that apparently some of these positions can be contracted out. I'm not sure if there's any truth to that, but if that's so, then that's something we need to explore because the approach that you're taking with our city hall staff, this is not sustainable. If we continue upon this course, you're going to break our city and leave us with no money. I like having money and us being able to pay our bills. There was a resident some time ago for the, was it the, I forget what it was, which item it was, but he was making the point how if the city goes bankrupt, then LA County takes us over, and if LA County goes bankrupt, then the state of California takes over the county, and if the county goes bankrupt, well, he doesn't know what, what happens then. But, I forget how he worded it, but the point is, I want us to use the utility users tax towards these things, these three things that I mentioned, and for us to explore the possibility of contracting some of these positions out so that those positions are locked in to a set salary and pay, and so we don't have to continue paying these percentage increases. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any emails, Madam Clerk?
No emails.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to offer any?
Yeah, two things is, we have some new folks in the audience that typically don't come, so I just want to say to them, you know, speakers are allowed to express their viewpoints, use foul language. We discourage that, but they, under the First Amendment, they have the right to do that. So it's not something that we can really control, but that is the ability of the speakers to come under the First Amendment and make their comment there. So I wanted to make sure that the public knew that. The second thing that I'd like to say is that these four cases, there's no settlements, there's nothing that is being approved in form of resolution. These are new suits. And the third thing, without getting too much in the detail there, there are limitations placed on any city and any employer when it comes to contracting out employees. There's case law out there, and it's too complicated to get into here, but suffice it to say that, you know, a lot of employers were trying to do just that, contract out, have part-time employees, they didn't have to pay them benefits and so forth, and the law came back and, because they were being treated as independent contractors. And the California Supreme Court came out a couple of years ago with the law that required employers to stop calling traditional employees independent contractors to avoid paying them their benefits and so forth if what they were doing were performing the traditional functions of the business of the employer. So if you ran an accounting firm and you hired accountants, you couldn't call them independent contractors. If you hired a plumber to come fix a problem at an accounting firm, plumbing is not the traditional work that an accountant does, and so it's okay to use and treat them as independent contractors. A lot more complicated than that, but there, suffice it to say, without getting into detail, there are limitations on what employers in the state and across the country can do, and those limitations do impact municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. We'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
First and second, meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, let me know when you are ready.
I'm ready.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Look, to go ahead and call the Southgate City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, April 8th. It is now 6:52. We apologize for the delay in the meeting. Madam Clerk?
Invocation?
Yes, the invocation. Who will be? Tina?
Yep.
Thank you, Tina. And the flag salute would be Manny. Thank you.
Dear heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and just thanking you for this beautiful day and for all the blessings that you continuously bestow upon us. We ask that you be with each of us, elected officials and city staff. Lord, help us to make the best decisions and choices for the community. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Hurtado.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
And Vice Mayor Davila is excused.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no public hearing today, so we're going to go ahead.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Translation?
Oh, thank you very much. Si alguien necesita una tradición, si puede subir sus manos para poder darle unos informes para poder oír. See nobody? Okay. All right, thank you. So, public hearing, we don't have none today. Go ahead and move on to comments from the audience for non-agenda items. Remind any member of the audience who wishes to speak on any topic that's not on the agenda, please line up. Thank you. Go ahead and state your name.
Chingus, again, Chingus Dominguez, resident of Southgate. Okay, so the thing I want to hit on is, I wasn't here for the last city council meeting, and as we all know, it tanked, it crapped out on us. You know, again, it's our, you know, our cyber systems are shit. I keep telling you, people, you don't want to listen. So I only saw the five minutes of the ELAC presentation, that bullshit community college that we're going to get. So Ms. Glaze was kind enough to email me the PowerPoint presentation, and I got to tell you, what I saw, that's trash. I don't understand, did they do community outreach? Did they do community engagement for the design of this? Because it's a million square feet, 19 acres in size, most of it is parking, and then you look at the courtyard, it's all cement and concrete, and they put something in it that I don't, I don't even like, palm trees. I'm not a fan of palm trees. Palm trees are lame, they have no canopy, they provide no shade. And I'm looking at the design of this campus. I mean, you have high schools out there that have better-looking campuses, you have community colleges that have better-looking campuses. You go to Long Beach City College, that's a good-looking, that's a good-looking school, that's a good-looking campus. We waited years for this community college, this ELAC, and what do they hand in after having, spent all this money, all these years? They hand in shit. They hand in this trash. They hand in this trash.
Negotiator, there's very brief and generic conversation had with the city manager with respect to the topic of labor negotiation and its impact on the associations. There was no discussion, no, no action taken in closed session with respect to that discussion. And that completes my report.
Thank you. And just, and just for the record, I want to make a correction. The conference with labor negotiators was, is item number two.
I'm sorry?
It was item number two.
What did I say?
It's in item number one.
Oh, no, thank you. Item number two. The four cases were item number one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody here in the audience would like to make a comment regarding any of the items on closed session? Come up. Please state your name.
Yes, Chingus, Chingus Dominguez, resident of Southgate. So for item number one, I mean, this is just classic city attorney hack sort of business that we can expect from our city attorney, you know, four legal cases, lawsuits against the city, and he refuses to share with us what these lawsuits, you know, the payouts and settlements, how much they're asking for. We can't even get that from our city attorney. It just shows you that just how wretched this man is with his disregard for the residents. For item two, this conference with labor negotiator where it says unrepresented employees and employee organizations. So I want to tie this into the utility users tax. I was talking with, you know, our, our old monkey council member Gil Hurtado, and I, we were talking about the utility users tax, and he was telling me, oh yeah, we gotta have the utilities users tax so we can pay, you know, these, you know, these percentage increase for compensation and salary for our city hall staff. And in my mind, I'm thinking to myself, oh, no, no, fuck that. No, we're not, we're not doing that. The, the utility, see, I didn't jump on board for us to have a utility users tax to pay for city hall staff salary, pay increases and compensation. No, the utility users tax be used for three things. One, grow the general fund. Two, pay our bills. And then three, take on big projects like the fucking courthouse that's been vacant for the past, what is it, 20 years? The football field that our kids have been dreaming about for the past 20 some odd years? And then these horrendous streets and roads that these big street renovation pavement projects, that's where our general, our utility users tax should be going, going towards. And the thing that I want to say to the council members and to our city manager, you guys need to doge the shit out of our city hall and take an Elon Musk approach with our city hall staff. I'm finding out that apparently some of these positions can be contracted out. I'm not sure if there's any truth to that, but if that's so, then that's something we need to explore because the, the approach that you're taking with our city hall staff, this is not sustainable. If we continue upon this course, you're going to break our city and leave us with no money. I, I like having money and us being able to pay our bills. There was a resident sometime ago for the, was it the, I forget what it was, which item it was, but he, he was making the point how if the city goes bankrupt, then LA County takes us over. And if LA County goes bankrupt, then the state of California takes over the county. And if the county goes bankrupt, well, he doesn't know what, what happens then. But, or was it, I forget how he worded it, but the point is I want us to use the utility users tax towards these things, these three, three things that I mentioned, and for us to explore the possibility of contracting some of these positions out so that the, those positions are locked in to a set salary and pay. And so we don't have to continue paying these percentage increases. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any emails, Madam Clerk?
No emails.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to offer any?
Yeah, two things is, we have some new folks in the audience that typically don't come, so I just want to say to them, you know, speakers are allowed to express their viewpoints, use foul language. We discourage that, but they, under the First Amendment, they have the right to do that. So it's not something that we can really control, but that is the ability of the speakers to come under the First Amendment and make their comment there. So I wanted to make sure that the public knew that. The, the second thing that I'd like to say is that these four cases, there's no settlements. There's nothing that is being approved in form of resolution. These are new suits. And the third thing, without getting too much in the detail there, there are limitations placed on any city and any employer when it comes to contracting out employees. There's case law out there and it's too complicated to get into here, but suffice it to say that, you know, a lot of employers were trying to do just that, contract out, have part-time employees, they didn't have to pay them benefits and so forth. And law came back and, because they were being treated as independent contractors. And the California Supreme Court came out a couple of years ago with the law that required employers to stop calling traditional employees independent contractors to avoid paying them their benefits and so forth, if what they were doing were performing the traditional functions of the business of the employer. So if you had ran an accounting firm and you hired accountants, you couldn't call them independent contractors. If you hired a plumber to come fix a problem at an accounting firm, plumbing is not the traditional work that an accountant does. And so it's okay to use and treat them as independent contractors. A lot more complicated than that, but there suffice to say, without getting into detail, there are limitations on what employers in the state and across the country can do, and those limitations do impact municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. We'll go ahead and make a motion to end.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
First and second, meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, let me know when you are ready.
I'm ready.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. To go ahead and call the Southgate City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, April 8th. It is now 6:52. We apologize for the delay in the meeting. Madam Clerk? Yes. The invocation, who will be Tina?
Yep.
Thank you, Tina. And the flag salute would be Manny. Thank you.
Dear heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and just thanking you for the beautiful day and for all the blessings that you continuously bestow upon us. We ask that you be with each of us, elected officials and city staff. Lord, help us to make the best decisions and choices for the community. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and the republic for which stands one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Hurtado.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
And Vice Mayor Davila is excused.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no public hearing today, so we're gonna go ahead.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Translation?
Oh, thank you very much. Si alguien necesita una tradición, si puede subir sus manos para poder darle unos informes para poder oír. Seeing nobody? Okay. All right. Thank you. So, public hearing, we don't have none today. Go ahead and move on to comments from the audience for non-agenda items. Remind any member of the audience who wishes to speak on any topic that's not on the agenda, please line up. Thank you. Go ahead and state your name.
Chingus, again, Chingus Dominguez, resident of Southgate. Okay, so the thing I want to hit on is, I wasn't here for the last city council meeting, and as we all know, it tanked, it crapped out on us. You know, again, it's our, you know, our cyber systems are shit. I keep telling you people, you don't want to listen. So I only saw the five minutes of the ELAC presentation, that bullshit community college that we're gonna get. So Ms. Glaze was kind enough to email me the PowerPoint presentation, and I, I gotta tell you, what I saw, that's, that's trash. I, I don't understand. Did they do community outreach? Did they do community engagement for the design of this? Because it's a million square feet, 19 acres in size, most of it is parking, and then you look at the courtyard, it's, it's all cement and concrete, and they, they put something in it that I don't, I don't even like, palm trees. I'm not a fan of palm trees. Palm trees are lame. They have no canopy. They provide no shade. And I, I'm looking at the, the, the design of this campus. I mean, you have high schools out there that have better looking campuses. You have community colleges that have better looking campuses. You go to Long Beach City College, that's a good looking, that's a good looking school. That's a good looking campus. What, we waited years for this community college, this ELAC, and what do they hand in after having, spent all this money, all these years? They hand in shit. They hand in this trash of a campus. And this is just so typical of shit gate and what you would expect. You know, I, I spoke with a couple of people and they told me, no, what you want is the original East Los Angeles Community College in Monterey Park. That's a good looking campus. Why the fuck they didn't turn that into us? Why, why don't we have that? Instead, you, you all saw the presentation. I only saw five minutes of it. And then the design of the, the paint scheme, the color palette of the buildings is a mishmash of colors. You know, part of it is gray, another part of it is brown. Why couldn't they just do a nice shade of cinnamon brown with light gray trim? Boom, there's your building. You look at the back of the half, the backside of the building, it's more of the same shit, mishmash of colors. Just go, I like uniformity. Go with one color and stick with it. But they, they couldn't even do that. Another thing that they, you know, I like, I'm like, where's the green space? Where's the greenery? Where are the trees with shade and benches underneath where the kids can lounge and hang out? There's none of that in the design. There's no green space. It's mostly concrete and cement. You've seen it. I wasn't here. I only saw five minutes of it, but it looks like trash. And the, the other thing is, they, they could, they could have put in a fountain. They didn't even do that. They could have put in a traditional splash pad with the holes in the ground. It shoots up water and cascades down, gets recirculated, pumped back up again. They didn't even do that. I mean, so now for the next, what is it, 40 years, we're stuck having to live next with, with this piece of mediocrity? This is pitiful. And let me tell you something. Those presenters, I don't know who did the presentation, they're lucky I weren't here because I would have trashed the hell out of those motherfuckers for having dumped that shit design on us. And I guess can't tell you how disappointed it is that this is what we're gonna be stuck with, having to live with. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next.
Hello. Can I move this?
Yes. Is it light green?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
We're all gonna speak individually. We're just in a group on a group assignment for USC. I have some things I would like to provide you with. I'm not sure if that's possible.
Yes.
But good evening. This evening, we are here to discuss the current situation of a street that is constantly being trafficked. The street that we are here to advocate repairs for is Frontage Road E. My parents are residents of the Thunderbird Villa Mobile Home Park located on 10001 West Frontage Road. Not sure if any of you have visited this side of town, but that street needs a lot of repair work. Councilmember Gil, I believe you are also a resident.
I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, I believe you are also a resident of the Thunderbird Villa Mobile Home Park. So I know that you must know the conditions of the street that I'm going to speak about. In order for my parents, other residents, friends and family, including our council member, to be able to access the main street being Garfield Avenue, when leaving the Mobile Home Park, they have to drive through Frontage Road E, as that is the only way out. Being that it is the only exit for the senior citizen residents to access the main street, you would think that there would be more care and maintenance done to the street. There are also, there are also other outstanding issues on the street as well. To start off with, the conditions of the street are terrible. I myself have had to repair the tire, my tire, two times because of the various potholes in the street. When it rains, the amount of potholes increases. In the past rainy season, the city patched the holes one day and the next, the next day, all their work was ruined because of the rain and traffic that wore the patches down all over again. The amount of potholes that that street causes, has causes you to fall into one after another when driving, and the patching of the holes isn't, hasn't been the solution because of the semi trucks that drive on the street and wear the patched holes quickly. The drive on this street makes, makes various individuals want to pick up their cars, as my mom says, like the Flintstones, at the fear of damage to their car. Being that one side of the street has less potholes than the other, people drive on the opposite side of the street to avoid the potholes, which is the danger for oncoming traffic. The street has various, has obviously been seriously neglected, and it is not fair to the residents of the Thunderbird Villa Mobile Home Park. I understand that the reason why the street isn't possibly fixed is because of the trucks that drive through there every day with heavy cargo. However, this is not an excuse to not look into repairing the street, being that there are not the only ones that drive through there every day. My parents and the other residents avoiding, avoid leaving various times in a day to run their errands because of the conditions of the street, which again is not fair to them.
Another problem with the street is the fencing that divides the street on the 710 freeway. As seen in the pictures, parts of the fence have been torn and ripped from the poles, and now there's clear access from the street from the 710 freeway. This is dangerous and particularly for our homeless population. There is a presence of homeless individuals in the area as they have been sleeping on the sidewalks within the trees along that street. Direct across the freeway would, direct access to the freeway would allow anyone to be able to walk into the freeway. Also, because of the community within the space, which is not safe due to the close proximity to the freeway, there has been shopping carts seen in encampments that could be thrown away onto the freeway and cause an accident. Being that there is not frequent patrol nor maintenance on the street, they know that they can do these things. The city has gone to clean up the trash, has gone to clean up the trash that is found in this area, but the bags of trash they collected were left there again the following day, and they're ripped apart and the trash was all along the street again. The trucks and the truckers are also the main problem on the street. The amount of trash that accumulates on the street partially because of them is ridiculous. Residents that personally witnessed some of them pour what one could assume is old oil into a gallon plastic container and leave it behind on the side of the road. They leave trash on the side of the road because of the conditions of the street and the fact that there is no patrol that keeps them in check. Also, various of these trucker parks were here to sleep overnight. Most of them throw their trash at night when no one drives through there. Being that there is so much trash that has led the individuals to think this is a dumping ground or of old furniture as well. In the map provided for you, there is a red circle over the particular area. The individuals that occupy this area seem to have some sort of truck repair shop that also has been seen various times throwing trash onto the street and the other side of the fence. In fact, the trash bags in the pictures are in close proximity to this business, and one can only think that this is their trash. This particular business is also part of an ongoing problem on the street. They consistently have trucks and cars parked along the fence and the other side of the street, which obstructs the view when wanting to turn to the street. In fact, they also double park on the street, and being that they are on the curve of the street, it obstructs the view of oncoming traffic. There was an instance in which they also took over all of the street because they were washing one of the semi trucks.
The solution we are seeking is that there should be some serious maintenance and repair done to the street. To be clear, we are first seeking that this street goes through some serious paving and not just patching the potholes, as that is not permanent solution. Also, let that be noted that the link, the link to report pothole repair in the city website does not work. So that would be another solution that is needed. The fence needs to be repaired in order to avoid potential dangers for the homeless population having access to the freeway, and it would also avoid an encampment they could create next to it. By fixing the fence, it would also improve the appearance of the street. We are also seeking for more patrol and accountability for the truck drivers that operate and park on the street to be considerate of the space and not dump their trash so easily on the street. We believe that these are reasonable solutions and that, and that we are seeking being, sorry, we are, we believe that these are reasonable solutions that we are seeking being that it is from the, to better the community and the residents of Thunderbird Villa Mobile Home Park, because this is part of the daily commute.
We didn't catch their names?
Yeah, give your names.
I'm Naomi Schiffman.
I'm Nora Lassiti.
And I'm Valerie Sarateluna.
And what year are you guys at SC?
Oh, we're first year master students for the School of Social Work.
Oh, well, congratulations, and thank you for being here with us today.
Thank you. Can we get a picture as proof for our resume?
As Vice Mayor, I'll go ahead and approve that for today, but thank you guys for being here.
Thank you.
Let's do this real quick.
Sure.
I can assure you that your professors are very good, because if they are requesting evidence, as a teacher, I would ask for the same thing.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Roberto Rodriguez. I'm just here to ask you, the increase of the, on the trash services, the $3, they never, we never got any notification of that increase. The trash company, they went up 640% back in December, and in, in February, in March, they, you guys increased the three, another $3, but we never got any, any, any notice before that. So I just want to know if you guys can give me that answer.
We can't respond to you now, but we'll make sure that when we come back to give our report, we'll respond to that answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you get his name? Bob, sorry.
Did we get your name?
We didn't get your name.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Okay, seeing no more? Any emails?
We did receive three emails. I have the first one from Jennifer Daly urging the City of Southgate Council to uphold the Planning Commission's unanimous decision on March 18th, 2025, to reject Engle's appeal for continued metal processing operations and a zone change at 8530 Alameda. She emphasizes the importance of the decision for the health, safety and quality of life of Southgate residents citing the violations of regulations and contamination risks. Daly also raises concerns about the city council's previous decisions to allow Engle's operations in 2023, and she requests a statement regarding the termination of Ms. Elguira in November 2024. She calls us for the council to prioritize the well-being of residents over their corporate interests. I received also an email from Roberto Sanchez expressing his frustration with how the city handles community participation, particularly with emails and the call-in feature for the city, the city council meetings. He urges that emails should be read in full, just like in-person comments, and that summarizing them limits civic engagement. He excuses the, he accuses council members and city staff of using these tactics to censor participation. Additionally, he requests an update on the call-in feature that was discussed in the previous meeting, questioning when, when it will be implemented. The second part of his comment criticizing the state of Tweedy Boulevard and the library, which are described as a hazardous due to crime and issues like drugs and graffiti. He's upset about the city's negative media attention regarding the danger posed to local schools and residents. He also expressed dissatisfaction with the police chief accusing him of neglecting his duties in favor of social media videos instead of addressing the, the needs of the community and concerns. We also received, the last one is from Maria Chavez, expressing frustration with city's management citing several issues in regards to financial mismanagement. She criticizes the proposed utility tax as a bailout for the city council and staff, blaming the city's financial troubles on poor management. Regarding the Tweedy Mile Business District, she describes the ongoing repairs as sloppy and poorly executed, resulting in an unattractive mismatched sidewalk design. Urban Orchard Park, she questions the additional taxpayer money spent on the park due to inadequate planning, especially since the land was known to be contaminated. In the Long Beach Boulevard Street improvements, she highlights the design flaw with dangerous rocks placed on the sidewalks, which were later removed due to poor planning. She demands accountability, questioning who is overseeing these projects and why they were approved. She offers to provide more examples of mismanagement and urges council member Hurtado to address these concerns. Thank you.
I'll do it. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Thank you, everybody. So we'll go ahead and start the reports from the departments. We'll go ahead and start with our public works. And if you can respond to any of the questions that deal with your department.
Yeah, absolutely. So tonight, we're receiving questions on Frontage Road, as well as some questions that came in or some commentary that came into your emails that I could just address quickly. It's really great to hear the students advocate for Frontage Road. Timing couldn't be any better. I want to let them know, as well as the general community, that the city does take pride in how it maintains its roadway. Our challenges sometimes are just simply funds. There's more fixes to be done than the city has funds for. So we do our best by going out there time and again to fix potholes when funding is restricted. I'm happy to report that the Frontage Road is scheduled for a repair. We've now done the designs of those, and we agree with many of the issues that were discussed, but design has been completed. So we are going to be fixing the sidewalks. We're going to be fixing the roadway pavements and a number of other things out there. Today, we had a pre-construction meeting, pre-bid meeting. We get bids in a couple of weeks, so we're anticipating construction on the project as a whole to start within the next month or two. Frontage Road will be scheduled within the many other roads that we're working on, but that is going to be approved, and you can take that back to your professor that you asked, and we're providing. So that's.
If you take credit for it, we won't.
Yeah, we'll sign, we'll sign off on that. I also want to address some of the commentary that came in via email with regards to first, the state of construction on Tweedy Mile. It just, you know, there's some commentary on the design of the sidewalks. I just want to mention that the designs that we put forward for Tweedy are to meet safety standards and ADA standards. With regards to the aesthetics, we're actually following our guide, which is a Tweedy Mile specific plan. That was the community of the vision. So what the, that was the vision of the community. So what they're seeing out there is their vision coming to fruition through construction on this project. I will ask for some patience. The project is under construction, so it doesn't quite look yet the way it's designed to look, but all sidewalk construction is meeting safety and ADA standards. With regards to the Urban Orchard project, we did run into a procedural regulatory issue with the LA County, not because the land was contaminated, just because of potential concerns that an illegal activity occurred that occurred 75 years ago may have led to some contamination, but we did studies to demonstrate that there were no contamination. And so we are finishing the project within budget and per the original design. And then on the commentary on Long Beach.
Hang on a second. Can you tell everybody how that was funded, the Urban Orchard?
Yeah, the Urban Orchard is not being funded through the general fund or through city funds. The Urban Orchard was funded through a series of many grant funds to the tune of over $30 million, but the, the project is being completed within the budget that we have within those grant funds. So no money is being paid by the city because of the additional studies that we, that we did. Then with regards to the rocks that were designed on, on Long Beach Boulevard, the, the use of those rocks or stones are now an industry standard that many cities have used. What we designed it out there was per standard and meets safety requirements, but the rocks were actually placed in areas where were designed for the public not to walk in. It was to keep the public out, but we understand the issue of community acceptance of that design and the potential concerns for safety issues. So we are going to replace that design with another design, and that's also part of the project that I talked about earlier. I believe that addresses all of the commentary on the public works.
Do you have, can you comment on the increase in the trash, or would that be?
I did not quite, to be honest with you, I did not quite understand the comment.
Okay, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Was bringing up concerns regarding the recent increase, I think it was a $3 increase that just went into effect, that there was no notification that was issued out to the residents for it. I know we did some outreach and we did, and there was part of the billing paperwork that was sent out, but.
Yeah, so, yeah, so just as part of the services that we're, that city is providing through UWS, the city, city does have a franchise agreement with UWS, UWS to provide solid waste services. As part of that, there's an annual rate increase. That's part of a CPI increase that is set by an industry standard. There is a process in place that requires one city approval and two community notifications. So those notifications do go out to the community. Sometimes unfortunately, for whatever reason, some individuals don't get to see them. Not sure how that happens, but notification was absolutely a part of what we've, what we engage in in these latest increases and every increase moving forward. Yeah.
And just to be clear, this was notifications, not just that we issued out, but also that UWS themselves issued out to residents.
It's notifications actually that the city does not issue. It's notifications that UWS engages with their, with residents.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just double check and make sure that, that those notices are going out appropriately.
Absolutely.
And that we, we let them know that, that we had that comment today.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then just one more thing regarding the truck parking. And then just one more thing regarding the truck parking along Frontage Road. Um, is, is, I, I'm not sure of the area, uh, I don't drive it as much as you do, Gil, but i- is there truck parking allowed on Frontage Road on a street that's adjacent to the, uh, to the freeway, seven-ten freeway?
Off the top of my head, I can't remember what the parking restrictions are there.
I don't believe that we allow trucks to be parked on the street. Excuse me. And to further a- address the comment, the comments of the three young ladies, um, I, I totally understand the frustration. Uh, my mom lives there too, and trust me when I say that I get a lot of calls, not only from my mom, but from council members.
They almost got my door.
About, about trucks, uh, that, uh, park on the street and they block traffic, and you're, you're right. So we do send our parking enforcement team to go out there and address those truck drivers. Um, in fact, we have had meetings with, uh, business owners that allow these trucks to park there. So we will continue, uh, working, um, with our parking enforcement team to cite, um, th- these violators. Also, um, we, you mentioned something about the homeless, uh, problem in the area. W- we work with, uh, UPR, the, the, you know, to help us maintain and clean the, the, the train tracks behind, uh, also with Caltrans to help us remove some of those, uh, homeless encampments, because they're not, although it's visible from the city of Southgate, it's, um, either the state or the county or, or the agency, so we work with them to help them, uh, keep them clean.
Thank you, Manny. Okay, Tina?
All right. Well, we have a couple of events coming up this weekend that we're pretty excited about with springtime, so we have our Easter Fest going on this Saturday. Um, it is sold out. Um, however, if anybody's interested in still signing up for the Easter Splash on Sunday, that's, there's still signups available for that. And then next week, uh, spring break for the kids, so we're offering the youth sports camp at Southgate Park, and I know there's still, uh, signups for that as well. And, uh, our mom prom's coming up at the end of the month, and that one is also sold out as well. So that's kind of what's happening for the remaining part of April.
Thank you, Tina. David?
No items, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sorry.
Stephen Aragon, our, um, acting budget and finance managers, uh, visiting us and representing the department today, uh, also to, for, in case there's any questions on the investment section, but, um, his first time being here, so if he, you don't have to have anything to report if you don't want to, but you could if you wanted to. Okay, took the pressure off.
You, you gave him an out. Okay, John?
Good evening. I don't have anything to report this.
Just thank you. Uh, Manny?
Well, in response to the, uh, comment that came in in the, uh, email about the issue at the library, this is a very complex topic, only because, uh, we're talking about , uh, two different issues. One is the fact that the library, it's a county, uh, facility, although in the city of Southgate, it's a facility maintained, owned, operated, staffed by the county. And anything that pertains to the library, it's reported to the county. Now, I understand, um, for some time, there's been a, a high presence of, uh, homeless individuals that like to hang out, and we found out recently that one of the reasons why, excuse me, is because, um, the library has Wi-Fi, uh, open, free to the public, so that attracts individuals to come and hang out. So when it, when it comes to homelessness, um, I want to make it very clear that, uh, being homeless is, is not a crime, so we cannot, um, make contact, we cannot, uh, arrest people for being homeless. However, because we are talking about individuals that are creating a quality of life issue to our residents, and more specifically to our children that go to San Miguel, we have been paying attention to this population that hangs out around the, uh, the library. So for several months, we have been making contact with them, and, um, it's a two approach. One, to provide resources. Um, we come out with our clinician, mental health clinician, to provide them assistance. We offer them, um, temporary housing, uh, which a lot of times they, they refuse, they just don't want to, uh, accept it. And, uh, we also, uh, request fire to come out and provide them with medical assistance should they need to be transported. And so we utilize the humanitarian approach, right, to contacting these individuals. Now, we are also seeing that when it comes to homelessness, there's also an aspect that comes with mental illness and sometimes drug and alcohol addiction. So as we make contact with them, we now are enforcing, um, laws that they're breaking. So going back to, uh, since the beginning of, of the year, um, and the different contacts that we have made there, we have arrested eighteen individuals for, um, mostly misdemeanor violations, having warrants, uh, vandalism, uh, trespassing, and, uh, these are offenses that although are punishable, um, and arrestable, we do, we bring them in, we process them, and, um, the law then dictates that unless they're wanted somewhere else, we have to issue them a citation. And so we're seeing that sometimes these people go back, but we will continue working with the county, um, to make it difficult for them to, to be there. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we contacted the county and requested them to shut the, shut off the, uh, the Wi-Fi, and now we're working on, hopefully we can get them to put a fence around the, the facility, so that it will definitely, uh, keep people away.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor slash Vice Mayor, uh, thank you. I just wanted to kind of give a general comment to the, uh, great community, uh, involvement we had with our students visiting here and asking tough questions about, you know, how do we get improvements in this community? And I think it's great to have a team atmosphere where we have community members bringing up areas of concern, be they homeless individuals, fencing issues, or the state of our roads or lighting. You know, we take pride in our community. We are doing, as staff, we want things to work out right. There's some very complicated issues, uh, socially, as, as, uh, Captain Arana brought up, there's complicated issues in ownership of properties, uh, for instance, in that case, or even along the seven-ten or along the river, where it's not always our property, there's other jurisdictions, so that can be, sometimes take longer than people want. And also, there can be complications in funding. Um, we talk about the chance to build these new parks, which are wonderful, even paving Tweety Avenue, which is happening right now. Those are great wins. Um, it's a lot of hard work from both our staff members and various, um, granting authorities to scramble to find this money to do these great things. But there's also our regular funds to do the rest, and those are very limited, and so I think fortunately, we have, um, fortunately, we are working through some roads that we can pave, but it's, the budget is so small that coincidentally, the students were able to pick a road that's actually on the list of the very tiny amount of roads this year we can do, so that's good fortune, but we, you know, I feel bad for other neighbors and residents that are on poor roads, who are aware of the condition in the city, and we are hunting for funds, but, uh, we don't have them in our base budget, so, um, you know, certainly report potholes, report any graffiti, we're gonna work our best on that. Uh, do you know that we are constantly looking for ways to improve the community and make it look better, and we appreciate your input, uh, at this meeting or even through our Southgate app. If you see concerns in the community, send it in, and we'll keep working together to make the community look better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, if you could also follow up, uh, one of the comments made by the students was that our website did not work for reporting the pothole on the, on the, on the city website. Uh, if we can just double check that and make sure that it's linking directly to the, uh, Go Southgate, uh, app.
Yeah, we'll check. I know, I personally sent one in last week and it was working, 'cause I'm, I'm an avid user and Public Works knows me, uh, but yeah, for a pothole, actually, so we'll check this week to see if something dropped off.
Specifically on the website, on the city website?
On the website, not through the app?
Yeah, not through the app.
Oh, okay.
There might be something on the, on the website that is not linking correctly.
Understood.
Thank you. Oh, and, and, sorry, one more thing, Mr. City Manager. I, I know that, you know, one of the things that is a common topic is the length of time that it's took, uh, for Tweety to be completed, but the ci- the city council actually took, uh, two different bids, uh, one being so it can speed it up the process and actually get the street done faster than it normally would, um, uh, if you can just touch on that a little bit. Yeah, for Tweety.
Yeah, for Tweety, uh, certainly road construction projects, even in other, even in other, um, communities or whatever, can take quite a while when you're dealing with, uh, sawing out concrete pieces, um, and having to rebuild a, I think if anyone can remember what Tweety was like three months, four months ago, it was, you know, quite an adventure. Um, lots of issues there, so it took a, it takes a lot of preparation to clean all that up, get a solid base so that when we pave it, it's gonna last. So that can take a long time, um, but it was done in a way, because this is our, probably our one shot in thirty years to do it, so we're gonna do it right, uh, but it does take a long time from the outside, but it's done to certain specs and engineering. It's to complete both crosswalk issues, increase the safety, fix up our furniture, fix up the, there's new bollards which have to be drilled in the ground and, ground. We have, we're gonna have new way for, uh, finding signage, we've got trellises, we've got benches, we've got new paving, we'll have new striping. I think it's gonna look great, but the construction always seems too long and too noisy. We appreciate it, but hopefully this three months of headache will be, uh, worth the thirty years of benefit we're gonna get.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, just briefly, because I know one of the council members has to leave, uh, the comment about, uh, reading of the emails, the Public Records Act, Brown Act allows for the summarization of those, because the public comments are intended to be comments directed to the city council, and the, uh, city clerk has a wonderful job, does a wonderful job of providing those emails to the council members so they can review them ahead of time, uh, and so when she is reading or summarizing those emails there, it's totally consistent with the law. Just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Uh, Ms. Councilwoman Ablos?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone into tonight's council meeting, those that are here in council chambers and those of you that are on YouTube. I thank you for your civic engagement in being present. In accordance with Assembly Bill one, two, three, four, I attended a meeting with the Southeast Water Coalition last Thursday. We were talking about three important issues, um, in regards to WRD's business practices, which is our water replenishment district. Couple of the issues that were addressed was first restoring the Budget Advisory Committee back to its original intended role, which consists of seven board members or seven members from the different cities that they service. Also to seek support for the BAC's recommendation of an increase of zero-point-nine water rate increase instead of the proposed four percent that WRD is proposing. We also wanted to address the growth that they've had in their revenues from ninety-three million. In just one year, it went up to a hundred and nine million. Now, WRD business practices will have a great impact on our community. WRD is scheduled to have a public hearing on April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five at ten AM to take a vote as to whether or not they want to increase our water rates to the cities that provide water to its communities up to four percent. I am urging the community to please make your voices heard and email those board members, specifically those in our area, which is Sergio Camat, Sergio Carrillo, if I'm not mistaken. I will provide those emails so that we can put them on our website. I would prefer that they go with the recommendation of zero-point-nine-zero, which is less than one percent, because it is going to impact all of our residents' water rates. They're gonna pass it on to the cities, and the cities are then gonna pass it on to its residents. Again, they have the reserves, they don't need that increase. This week, I will also be attending the Greater LA Vector Control tomorrow. They too are also seeking to increase their rates to our communities, um, which will impact your tax, your property taxes. So they are scheduled to come into our city and make a presentation more or less about in our last meeting in May. I will confirm that with them tomorrow, um, because I think part of understanding of what's happening is understanding the background of it. Now, vector control, you might think it's insignificant, I'm not interested in paying it, but if you understood the work and the labor that goes into it, now again, we're talking about mosquitoes. Mosquitoes that carry a lot of diseases. One bite of a mosquito with malaria can be fatal to a child, to an adult, or to a senior, or even to our pets, for that matter. They carry many diseases that impact the public health, so they will be coming in to provide that educational presentation to the community. And thank you, Mr. City Manager, in regards to the Southgate app. I encourage the community to make sure you use it, report anything that you see. I wanna highlight our Public Works Department. I was driving down Firestone Boulevard and noticed that some of our light poles, or one of them had the wires pulled out, and the light wasn't even working. So I took a picture, submitted it. The next day, they were out there and they were repairing it. So the app works, they do get the information, and I appreciate the twenty-four-hour turnaround, which was really nice to see, uh, but I want to make sure that the community is aware of it and that you do use it. Download the app, because you are our eyes and ears out there, and if you don't let the city know what's going on, then our ci- city's gonna continue to fall in disarray. But if you're reporting it, it's documented, and now we can be held accountable. Um, other than that, thank you very much. I hope everybody has a really nice, uh, I think we're gonna meet after Easter. Have a nice Easter, and definitely I will encourage, appreciate those that are in your life, because they could be gone. So always be kind to each other, respect yourself so that others will respect you, and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Mr. Uh, City Treasurer?
Nothing new to report, but I did want to share just some, uh, quick, um, highlights or information. The International Studies Learning Center, the high school, uh, robotics team has made it to the Robotics World Championship. That's gonna be, uh, hosted in Houston next week, so the team is flying to Houston on Tuesday, will be there and traveling back, uh, on Easter Sunday. That's a, a huge deal, uh, because it's a team from our region, and it's a, a rare occurrence when a team from our region makes it to a world championship, especially in robotics, so that's a, you know, something for us to acknowledge, and if they win the world championship, which, you know, fingers crossed, they do very well, uh, that, you know, gives them, uh, the opportunity to go, uh, compete against, uh, global, against other countries. So the competition next week will be against, um, other states, so this is, you know, teams from across the nation competing for the, uh, championship, and then goes on to, uh, global, so they're very excited. They did receive some support from the Youth Commission, um, also LAUSD, uh, funded, you know, the majority of the money, uh, to get them out there, and I'll be joining them on Tuesday and documenting their journey, so I'm excited for that, and, um, you know, I'll be rooting for them as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
That's awesome. Make, make sure you, uh, tell them that we're all, uh, rooting for them and issuing the support, and regardless of, uh, if they win or not, we should, uh, make a note to have them come down and honor them, uh, here, uh, for that great achievement.
Only if they bring the robot.
They gotta bring the robot.
Well, you're strict.
Madam Clerk?
I, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hurtado?
Okay, all right, so, um, a couple of things. So our staff is really pretty much taxed in terms of, uh, shouldn't have used the word taxed today, right? Uh, but there's a lot of work out there, and it's, I consider them to be like self-inflicted wounds, and here's what I'm talking about. I've gotten complaints from people that, uh, neighbors are throwing loud parties and that the police are taking a long time to get there. Well, first of all, there's a noise ordinance, and people should be respectful of their neighbors, and if somebody, you know, is throwing a party and a neighbor tells them, hey, can you lower down a little bit? When police have to go out there, it's taking them away from other duties, you know, and there's other more serious things to, to handle. I'm getting complaints about, uh, that we're not sending staff out to their neighbors who have their Christmas lights still up, that they're not maintaining their lawns, uh, that people are parking on their lawns, uh, people are working as mechanics out of their property, making a lot of noise, and, um... a lot of noise. And um, you know, I get it. Those things should not be happening. But when we have to use city resources to go out there and tell people, you can't do that, you can't do that, it's just taking staff away from more important things. And those are important, but if people just, you know, police themselves, you know, I think it'll make it a whole lot easier. Um I think some of the misinformation has already been uh addressed, but I'm gonna talk a little bit about that as well. So the word mismanagement and they refer to the urban orchard. And as you can hear, our local general fund was in touch for that. Not one penny of it. It's all through grants that our staff is very aggressive in getting. Um our park staff does a very good job. And by the way, Mr. Crabtree, I don't think anybody said thank you for your time being here. Is tonight your last meeting with us? Okay, well, I think we should thank him for his time here. Thank you so much. You were amazing during your time here. All right. Yeah, yeah. Give, give my hand. That's the hand you're getting, okay? Okay.
He deserves so much.
Worth a proud. There's a hand right there. Oh, no, no, Ro. That is not nice.
Oh, but that's not the way. Mr. Crabtree, but I know you're, you're gonna miss us. Cause I know we're gonna miss you, but I know you wanna enjoy your retirement too.
I, yeah, I just needed to mention that as I looked up. Uh but mismanagement, when people say something was mismanaged, I really would hope that they would come and tell us or email us and tell us where they feel that we mismanaged. Uh because we do everything that we can to control the funds. Our staff does a fantastic job of controlling the funds. We have a treasurer who's very active in looking at books. We have an auditor who's looking at every dollar that is spent out there. And when he goes through the books, uh Ms. Avalos, Councilwoman Avalos, when she did the, the books also, she questioned a lot of things. And so there's, you know, the, the throwing out the word. And I get it. On social media, you'll have a one page that's always, always talking, they're mismanaging, they're mismanaging. And they're talking about the U U T. Look, we talked about that at the last meeting, but the fact is that the city of Southgate, when I talk to people and they say, hey, look at all the taxes we're paying. And I ask them, well, how much taxes are we paying? What are you talking about? And they say, well, we have the highest tax. Well, we don't. And when they refer to the sales tax, they say, look, we're paying ten point two five, which is gonna be ten point, is it ten point seven five already? Effective already? So it's ten point seven five. And I tell them, well, really, no, we only tax you two percent. The other eight point seven five is elsewhere, the state, the county. We only tax you two percent. And they're shocked to know that the other eight point two, eight point seven five is not in Southgate. It's outside. It's not in our control. Uh you heard uh Councilwoman talking about some rates that are being increased out of our control. These have nothing to do with us. Um they mentioned the utility users rate. Every city around us has that and they've had it for many, many years. We had a presentation just recently where it talked about that. Downey has had theirs since two thousand and twelve. Uh Lindwood has had theirs since two thousand and eight. Huntington Park has had their utility users rate since nineteen eighty-nine, and I can go on and on. And Southgate has been at zero. Zero. And I say that because we've not wanted to consider it. So when we bring it up, it's because we're looking at every area where we can save money and we've done that. But there's a point where we have to consider uh that as an option. And at the end, it's not gonna be us imposing it. If we decide on putting it out there for the, you, the voters to vote, it'll be your call. And so again, when that time comes, you're gonna get more detailed information on it. But what I encourage you to do is don't read social media and pretend that's a fact. Okay? There's a responsibility. People who are posting stuff have a responsibility to tell you the truth. But then you, as a reader, have a responsibility to confirm what they're saying. And if you have any doubts, come meet with our staff. You know, people are saying that our police department didn't do anything about the homeless issue and that they don't care. That's not true. That is total nonsense. Uh homeless, as uh Captain Arana mentioned, uh is not a crime. And for many years, the homeless population has been protected by the Eighth Amendment, which says that you, no city, no municipality can create an unjust law. An unjust law meaning, let's say he's homeless and we say, hey, you can't be here. He goes two blocks down. Hey, you can't be here. He goes three blocks down. You can't be here. Well, if we arrest him for being anywhere on those streets, well, where's he gonna go if he's homeless? But over the last year, I think it was, that there was a case up north uh here in California where a city of about thirty thousand people uh started dealing with their homeless problem. And believe me, their homeless problem was huge. They had about three thousand homeless people in a community of thirty thousand. We don't have that. And so they started taking action and the Supreme Court agreed with them that people can start taking action on trying to address it. And our staff is learning how to deal with the homeless uh population within the guidelines given by the law and with compassion because these are human beings in, in need. So again, our staff does a great job. And again, when I hear that they don't care and that they're just allowing these people, no, they don't. You know, and the people, the young people that were here earlier, uh they mentioned about the roads and stuff like that. They didn't mention too much about the homeless people that we have to see all the time. They enter, enter our lot. I mentioned this story once, once before. I had a bike, a mountain bike, and I liked taking it all the way down to Long Beach. One morning I woke up, ready to go, my bike was gone. So I decided on going for a run down the riverbed and I saw the homeless guy riding my bike. And this is just the reality of it. And, you know, at that moment, I thought, well, he needs it more than I do. And I just let it go. But, you know, the homeless people come into, uh Captain Arana will tell you, you know, we see them there all the time and patrolling is always going in there and, you know, they try to move them out. But there's a, a way to deal with the homeless people with compassion and within the guidelines. And one last thing I'll mention in regards to that. Years ago, we had a situation here with our staff. Uh Arturo will remember. Uh our staff went out to clean out a homeless encampment and evidently they united, all the homeless people got together and they sued us and we lost in court because we removed them. And uh again, they threw the Eighth Amendment at us and uh but again, um just wanna touch on those. Last thing I'll mention in regards to the emails, I think it was mentioned once before. All she has to do is summarize it, but I will tell you that I know my colleagues. We all get them and we read them word for word because we do wanna hear from you. So the fact that you email them and she doesn't read the entire thing, the message, we still get it because we read the, we get the emails. Um with that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you folks for sitting here, being here, doing your civic duty, joining us tonight. Uh I'll start with uh the homeless because I, I, you know, I guess that seems to be the biggest issue here in the county uh the last couple of years. Um and I know, uh last meeting I asked about the count. And I, so I'm still waiting for, did we do a count and are we uh, cause every year we're supposed to count the homeless that live in our streets. And I know that uh uh it's important that we keep track of that. So eventually I wanna hear that report. And I remember we did a report, we did our own report, just so the people know. And that report stated, a lot of reasons people end up homeless uh is for divorce, loss of job, you know, uh substance abuse and, and mental health, those kinda issues. Uh so it's a very complicated issue with many layers. Uh and today is a good indication of that, what we, some of the topics that came up. I think we have to have a, a more comprehensive approach. Uh I know that uh Sergeant Garcia is not no more the point person, also in charge. We have another person, right, that uh taken charge, right?
Yes, sir. It's Lieutenant Bowler.
Yeah. So I'm sure we're gonna be hearing from the lieutenant. Uh but I guess the point I wanna make, and I brought this up before, uh you know, homeless people, um and I, and I walked Tweety today. I'll talk a little bit about Tweety because I walked this weekend. I walked Tweety. And I did pass by the, the library and, and I observed three individuals, four individuals that were homeless right, right in front, as we walked through with some, with some other residents. Um and um, you know, um so the point I'm getting at is I think that, and one time we said, why don't, we know they're by the river, we know they're by the tracks, cause that's how they end up over there. And then we chase them from over there. So they're really not a place for them to go, right? Cause that, I, it was just stated there. But I think if uh I was seeing where, if we could be more, I was thinking, you know, a place to bat, bat them, a place by the river there where they associate, you know, give us some, some support in the sense where they could feel good about themselves a little bit. If we can, and I've talked about that, doing that whether on the west side or by the river, I think uh it would uh serve us well because, and then they will see that we really care about that, that we want them to get their, maybe go into the services, the housing or whatever. But I, I guess if we, may, maybe we have to kinda look at our approach, be more comprehensive. I think that uh uh and I, and I've gone to the count and I remember some of them saying, well, you know, I'm not ready. When I'm ready, I'll, I'll seek out those services and, and so forth. So uh, you know, just some food for thought there in that, in that regard. Um the other thing, uh Mr. Mario Dominguez mentioned the college, uh you know, it's been taking a long time to build. Uh yes, they did do a report. I guess our, our, it wasn't recorded, right? Uh city uh clerk, uh from what I gather, I, I, uh something went wrong with the technology or so. Uh but they did come, the president did come, the person in charge of the bond project did come, they did make a report. Uh you know, uh Mr. Dominguez, on the side note, I would sit down with you for an hour to discuss a lot of the history behind the, the effort to bring the college here, uh our own college here. Uh and a lot of the decisions are, are made at the district, not even locally. There's nine colleges that are part of the L A Community College District. So it's, it's a, it's a, you know, we, I'll, I'll make time for you to discuss more in thorough in terms of uh your, your concerns. Uh so I wanted to mention that um the, the, the Thunderbird, uh that's great that we have some folks that are interested in Thunderbird. They wanna clean it up. I mean, the street. Um and um, you know, not just patching it up, but also we have a lot of heavy duty trucks that come through there, right? Cause it's the, the, the trash hauler and other businesses there. So I suspect that those streets, we fix them up, they're gonna need repairs more sooner than later. It's just part of the nature of the, that area, right? Is that right? Uh do we get any ki- uh the money for that, from, from the business, the, the trucks that all, we use those, that road mostly?
Yeah, we don't have a source of revenue that comes from businesses for the purposes of fixing the street.
So they don't do, okay. But we just have to find the money. Okay. I just wanted to ask that. Uh and the gentleman did ask about the three dollars. I know mine has gone up almost double. I mean, I remember it was twelve something, now it's twenty-five. So and we've only had them for the trash hauler for how long? Three years?
Twenty-four, I believe. January twenty-four was the first.
So I, I think we need to, we should, I just look at that because is it, is it, and you said three dollars every year. It's like, if it goes up every year, it's gonna add up. And, and I'm just concerned, is that, uh, just get more information on that so we know uh what's going on with that. Um and let's see, what else? Um you know, I walked Tweety with some folks and, and you know, there was, you, I, I gotta comment. It's great that we're doing Tweety, that, that it's getting, uh but there are a lot of, some of the businesses, I did talk to a number of businesses, they're saying, well, how long is it gonna take? There's a lot of dust, there's a lot of noise and it's affecting our, our businesses. And, and I think the last time you said a couple of weeks, is it really a couple of weeks or is it more? What's the timeframe for it to be completed?
Yeah, we're nearing the last phases of construction. The final paving will be completed by the end of this week. So in large part, a big part of the project will be completed by the end of this week. And after that, we do things like striping the roadway or what have you. But we're looking at uh, I believe it's the first week in, or April, May, I believe it's the end of May or first week in June where it's gonna be completed.
Okay. Well, that's okay. Good to know. Uh you know, I walked from the park all the way to Long Beach and then back on the other side of the street with some of the folks. And just some observations. And I know you guys are doing a good job, but here's the thing. There was a couple of open trenches and they were doing Saturday in the afternoon. So and, you know, signs, so there's holes still. And, you know, so it's, it's, if we could do something, I don't know if we have a crew during the weekend because that's gonna cause at night somebody to, you know, fall into the hole or hurt themselves. So just some, 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 you know, giving you some insight on that. Um you know, they did mention, why are there multiple designs? I mean, because some of the sidewalk is a certain way and then the other side is not that way. I know they're critical, but those, those are the things that they mentioned. I mean, the, it doesn't, it's not consistent with the other design that's there. And so people are, 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 did mention that. So the different types of concrete, it's gonna be different from one area to the new. So uh the bench, one bench, I gotta tell you, um it's uh where the pioneer, the center, medical center on that corner, it's actually on the sidewalk. So if we could move it a little bit, all it needed to be is moved a little bit more towards off, uh, off of the sidewalk. Um and, and then just another thing, uh walking on, on, there's a rise sidewalk northeast corner of Anera and Tweety, uh Arturo, that's really this high. I mean, it's a, it's just needs to be, something needs to happen before somebody gets hurt there. So if we could've kinda addressed that. Um and then let's see what else. The park, I know you got a lot of activities. I wanted to sign up my granddaughter for that event, but I guess it's sold out. And then you mentioned sold out again. It goes to the notion that we need more services for our young. I mean, cause if kids can't participate because it's sold out, it's, it's um, so and I know some of the young people, the middle school age, other kids have asked if we could do more. And I was gonna ask you, is this spring break, are we kinda reducing the price for them to learn to swim, to go to use the, because that's always an issue, right? A lot of, not every family can afford their kids participating in, in, in the parks activities. Are we doing anything in that regard? I mean, in the past, we have. Um I'm hoping that we could do, especially when all the kids are out of school, you know, if something, whatever we could do to help our kids stay busy, cause you know, hardworking families, this is a hardworking community and a lot of folks are tied on, on, on revenue and so forth. Um and then uh the other thing, the apps, you talked about the apps. I know when I submit, it gets done. And I call Arturo when it gets done. But is it only for council members or is it also for, is it, cause, you know, uh I hope the people, cause some residents told me I'd submit and I haven't heard anything. So hopefully it's not just for us, but it's also for the average resident that's submitting that, cause I know that's what they've said.
Yeah, we take every um work order request and we treat it the same regardless of who is making that. Sometimes there are requests that we can, that come in that are completed within twenty-four hours, like graffiti removal. And other times, residents are seeing that quick turnaround because it might be an item that is gonna take two, three months for scheduling or what have you. But we treat every service request that comes in the same regardless of who makes it.
Thank you, Arturo. I really appreciate it. And finally, I just wanna mention that it might, you know, everything that's going on in our society, I have to mention that that I, I really believe that our demos, democracies at risk. I, for some reason, I really starting, just on what I hear all around. And um, and I don't know if I'm the only one hearing this, or we're just all too fearful of what's going on and don't wanna say anything about what's going on. But uh, you know, uh there, there's a lot going on that, that, that's worrisome. And uh especially at the, at the federal level, uh a lot of agencies have been devastated with personnel cuts and personnel. We could talk about our national security. Uh we could start with the just judicial department at the federal level. Uh a lot of major institutions that we all are familiar with, uh you know, are being challenged, are being threatened, their very existence. I, I, I'm worried about America's future and the, what, the, the, you know, I really am. Uh the universities, they're going after universities, they're going after lawyers, companies. I mean, there's a, this is, I mean, this is really serious. I don't, I, I, you know, and I'm, I'm thinking, I don't know what we could do at the local level, but uh, you know, I'm certain, I'm concerned about the federal funds that we receive from Washington. We get a lot of money here for, for projects and, and this and that. And, and so um, you know, the Center for Disease Control, I mean, there's some cuts there. There's some environmental cuts for all the progress we've made in with the environment. I mean, I, I, huh? The means, I mean, you could go on. I, I don't wanna belabor this, but I think this is important. So I'm, I don't know what, uh, what I'm gonna do personally, but I, I, I think we need to speak up. And, and within, I don't know, did, did everybody see the protests all around here in L A and everywhere, Washington, everywhere? I mean, people are, are coming out and I think it's important. That's a good sign. That's a good sign, folks. Because I really feel that um, you know, I don't know what we could do, but I just wanted to put that out there in our community. I, you know, I fear for our immigrant community. I really do. Uh hardworking people that are law-abiding and, and I can't imagine what they're, some of them are, how they Hardworking people that are law abiding and I can't imagine what they're, some of them or how they feel. I mean, that they're not treated like with, with human decency, I think, the way they're treated. I mean, some animals are treated better and it's sad. I really, I'm really saddened by the course of things that are happening in America. And so anyways, I just wanted to throw that out there for the public and just give some, some, some thought, my thoughts on that. And hopefully, you know, things start changing. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like just to touch on a few things that we heard from the members of the audience. One of the, I want to definitely touch on is the comment. And I know Councilmember Gil Hurtado has already touched on it, but the notion that there's mismanagement of funds or anything that's, that's fishy with, you know, how we're operating business here in the city. Our city finance department, I believe, is three years in a row has, has been awarded a, an accounting reward and has been identified as, as being able to manage the books and be able to do an appropriate audit of our finances, our budget, you know, hearings. We do them every year and this is one of my, you know, my really big pet peeves is every year we come with a budget and we open it up to members of the audience. We let our residents know this is how we're going to be spending the money and there's nobody here. There's nobody here to hear it. There's nobody here to see how we're going to allocate these funds, what services we're going to be able to offer, what our plans are for street improvements, what our plans are for certain things. And there's nobody here and I really want to urge our residents to be here for those. Those are the really important ones where we get the chance to really identify where every dollar goes to in every department and how every department is able to utilize that money to offer the services that we are able to offer here. One of the things that always strikes me is that our residents don't know that our annual revenue that we generate in our general fund is around $65 million. But our city's annual budget on an annual basis is way above that. I believe this year we're on pace to spend over $165 million. So $100 million more than we actually generate in our general fund. That money comes from all of our staff being very aggressive and identifying where we can identify grants out there from our state and federal level, where measure funding is available to fix our streets, where we can go out and find that money to help build these programs. So when we, when we touch on our budget, what we generate in tax revenue, property tax and business licenses is very small compared to the amount of money that we're able to spend to make our city look and improve the way it has over the last 20, 30 years that I've, that I've been here. I don't know if all of you have been here as long as I have, but the park looks a lot different than when I did when I was a kid. It's an amazing thing. I remember our parents used to wish that there were shading here at the parks to be able to watch the kids play. Parents used to get into, I remember yelling matches because parents would have umbrellas and they couldn't see past an umbrella and just a simple shade, just change that. And it's a great environment for, for everybody to be at. So I just wanted to kind of touch a little bit of that and, and really state that we have different departments in our finance department, all the departments that are overlooking what, you know, we're being charged. And also here in our city council, we have an appointed auditor, which is me. And I, you know, we go through the warrant register and identify any places where we can make sure that we're doing a better job of how we're making sure our bills are being paid. Simple things like, hey, we want to get away from having late fees, right? It could be just a $7 late fee, but if we can do something differently to adjust that so we don't ever have to pay that ever again, we're going to identify that because we want to make sure we're not spending money where we shouldn't be. So just wanted to relay that. I had a pleasure of going to a meeting with the other 88 mayors of L.A. County. It was hosted by Mayor Karen Bass regarding the amazing events that we're going to be having here in our city in the L.A. County soon, including the FIFA World Cup in 2026, the Super Bowl again coming back in 2027, and of course, L.A. 28, the Olympics coming to our communities in, in the year of 28. And what they're letting us know is this is going to be the biggest Olympics in the history of all Olympics. There's going to be more sporting events than ever before. They added, I believe, six more events. So there's going to be, you know, just in general, it's just going to be a bigger event. We're anticipating having 15 million people come to L.A. County for the Olympics alone, right? And it's going to be a great event. And they're asking for cities to get involved early and figure out how we can participate in and how we can be part of the celebration. And I know our staff has done a good job. They issued out a survey. We've been able to answer on that survey, provide them what services or what facilities we have here to be able to facilitate certain events, viewing parties, hosting nations. You know, we are a Latino community. Could we be an ambassador to host Team Mexico, Team El Salvador, Team Honduras? For all the different cultures that we have around in our city, could we be that cultural hub for them to be able to come to our city and be part of South Gate and see what we have to offer them as host cities for, you know, viewing parties of these events? So great opportunity. I know it's, you guys think 2028 is far away, it's right around the corner. And it's a great opportunity for us to just start, you know, thinking how we can get involved, what we can do and how can we be part of the great success. One of the things I want to highlight is, you know, they were talking about the Olympics in, in 84. I was two years old when it happened, so I don't really remember too much of it. But what I do know, because every year for, I would say since the Olympics, our swim lessons in the summer that are completely free to our residents have been fully funded from the L.A. 84 Foundation. So the Olympics, the actual event, made so much money that there's still a pool of money that benefits our communities even to this day. And it's something that we want to highlight, that that's the legacy that the Olympics of 28 can have, that we can be able to generate the revenue and the foundation that can support this community's future for years to come. So I think it's a great opportunity to be involved and I'm happy that, you know, we were invited and was able to participate in the discussion for that. And just a message regarding the college, ELAC. I live right across the street from it. I wanted to look as beautiful as possible. I wanted to be a great location, but ultimately I wanted to be a place of education where our kids and our residents will be able to go to not have to travel far, not have to go to Monterey Park, not have to go down to Cerritos College, El Comino College. They can literally take a bus from the east side of the city or walk across the street and be able to participate in college classes at a great facility that's going to be amazing for our residents. And our goal is to ensure that our students here have a clear understanding that there is a commitment for two years of free education and that commitment, as long as we keep fighting for it, will be there for them. And why not have it here at home? Why not have it where you're, where you're right at, walking distance to be at? So instead of, you know, saying that it's, it's not the prettiest place, how about we just say it's, it's going to be the place that's going to build the future of our, of our generations and it's going to be a place where I went to school? I mean, if you remember the building right next door to Alameda there, it wasn't the prettiest building, but I guarantee you, when I left that building, I was always feeling great because I had great educators in there showing me exactly what I needed to get done and being great mentors to us there. So I'm looking forward to that continuing and I'm happy that it's here in our community. That's 93, awesome. And so, and I just wanted again to touch on the length of time on Tweety. And one of the things that I think all the council members are very passionate about is impacting our residents and impacting the businesses on our community when we're doing community improvements. And that is why for this bid, we actually asked for two different timeframes. What they would normally do in a normal schedule and an escalated schedule so that we can finish faster. And we actually approved as a council to go with the faster timeline, to be, to make sure we limit the impact to the residents, to make sure we limit the impact to the businesses. And that's what we did. And I'm very proud of the work that we did when we, when we brought that up as a council, saying that we wanted to make sure we expedite that and I'm glad, I'm glad that we're able to do that. And in just a few more weeks, we'll be able to see that, the fruits of that decision and be able to see what the, it's going to look like out there. I'm looking forward to our residents enjoying the area. I'm looking forward for the businesses to be excited for it. And then hopefully we can start then just working on the buildings and getting them going and making them proud of the area that they serve. And that's all I got. So, thank you, guys.
Mayor, because that, because, you know, I'm thinking about it, you kept it open on the street. You didn't close it down. If you wanted to close, it would impact the community, right? So, you know, it's always been open, it hasn't shut down, right?
Yeah, the construction was very well organized to be set up so that it has the most minimum impact possible. Where we were working on one block at a time, for example, one segment at a time. And we would start on a Monday and all work would be completed by Friday. And so it made its rounds that way. Now we're at the end of construction where large parts of the roadway are being worked on all at once. The construction is moving really fast, like the Tweety is going to get paved in all three days. So inevitably, when you're building a project of that magnitude in a fully built out city or a place as busy as Tweety Ma'o, there are going to be some impacts, but we're doing everything we can to minimize those.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I just wanted to add a few more things, one more thing, really. Regarding the half cents increase in the sales tax that just went into effect, the county held an election and we, and as a county, we voted to approve that. It passed and that money was actually for the funding of helping the homeless population to, to help for, for housing and plans for that. So it is something that was voted on by the residents. We approved it so that even that half cent tax that was added on came to the residents and it was the residents who spoke and said, yes, we see the value in making, making that commitment to be, make sure we improve the resources that we have for the homeless population. And then I'll, again, I agree with you in your sentiment that, you know, we have to continue to do things to stay vocal and active in our, in our federal government and what we can do here locally. I don't think we can say it any better, but let's just continue to get in good trouble. Right? All right, moving on, Madam Clerk, to item number consent calendar, yes, thank you.
Agenda items one and two are consent calendar items.
Thank you, and who will be making the presentation for?
No, it's just, it's just consent.
Consent, okay.
Unless you want to discuss it.
So I'll go ahead and open it up to any member of the audience regarding consent items number one and two.
Okay, so one and two are basically a mirror of each other. Is this the same, basically the same thing, the investment report? So the thing that I noticed when I went through the item report and I liked how it has the, the listing of the various funds that the city has. And one that stood out to me was the Public Access Corp., which I'm assuming is the Public Access Fund and it has a sum of $107,625.59. Again, $107,625.59. So I'm looking at this Public Access Corp., which I'm assuming is a Public Access Fund. So the last city council meeting, it crapped out, it tanked on us. This is an habitual problem with our city council meetings, it just don't work. So I contacted the city of Cudahy, Cudahy has Zoom. They have Zoom, I've been participating with their Zoom, trying to give guidance to their city council members. And I contacted Richard Iglesias, who's the city clerk of Cudahy. And I asked him and I laid out all the problems that we have with, we had Zoom, you know, with presentations not working, audio petering out, losing the picture, it going black. And I said to Richard Iglesias, have you ever experienced this with your Zoom? He said, no, we've never had any of these issues. I contacted the city clerk of Downey, Alicia Duarte, Downey uses Zoom and YouTube. And I said the same thing to her and I explained to her the whole thing. And she said, in the time that we've been using Zoom and YouTube, really, because Zoom is really just a backup in case something happens with our YouTube feed. And she said, in the time that we've been using these two systems since the coronavirus came into effect, we've only had, to the best of my memory, six failures. And it's very rare, it's like once in a blue moon, as she put it. So how is it that Cudahy and Downey are able to pull off their city council meetings with practically no interference, yet here in Shitgate, we still see this problem occurring? So what I want to say is council members, use the Public Access Fund, the $107,625.59 for the white haired gentleman who was the, I'm assuming is our city's IT consultant who did the information, you know, the technology role master plan last year. Have that white haired gentleman come back here, do an evaluation, do an assessment of our cyber systems and cyber networks so we can determine what the problem is and fix it. You know, it's the same fucking shit with you people, council meeting after council meeting where you don't want to fund and give us the things that we want for our city. The chief has a horse. Why is it you have no problem funding the chief of police to ride around like as if he's fucking John Wayne on a horse? Meanwhile, our cyber systems are dog shit, basura, like Mr. Salinas, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Any emails, Madam Clerk?
We have none, thank you.
Thank you. What are the wishes, council?
Yeah, I just want to see if we can explain it for the people who are looking at the, at the investment reports. There's a lot of red in it and I don't want people to misinterpret what that means. Can you explain what that is?
Sure, I'd be, I'll be glad to explain that for you. The difference, the red column, or I shouldn't say the red column, the column with the numbers in red or in black indicate the, bear with me, I got the wrong page. And can you clarify which page you're looking at?
Yeah, so it's the unrealized gain and loss and it's got a whole bunch of them.
Page three. Page three. Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's on your paper there, but I'm looking at my screen, okay.
So what you're looking at there, the unrealized gain and loss is simply the difference between the value of an investment, investment instrument when you purchase it and the current market value. So there is no actually realized gain or loss. It's just the difference in the current value based against when it was purchased.
Yeah, and I wanted an expert, and I'm not, I'm not one, to be able to identify that because when somebody looks at this report, let's say that they're at home and they get on the report and they say, look at how much money they lost, because it's a huge number, $700,000. That way they realize, no, they, it wasn't dumped, we didn't lose it and had we done something to stop it, it would have been better. So, thank you, and it's on both reports, on one and two.
That's correct.
Okay. And just to correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but you know, the losses haven't been incurred, that's just the performance of that investment to date. Once the maturity occurs, you know, the expectation is that it would not be at a loss at that point if the investment has performed. I think, you know, just for counsel on these two items, and Stephen could chime in if needed. Q2, you know, not specific, these two quarters that we're looking at, but Q2 meaning the quarter that we're in, that's the quarter that we need to keep an eye on due to, you know, the tariff wars and all the other uncertainty that's happening in the, in the economy. I think that's where our eyes should be really focused on and see how things, you know, transpire this quarter. Because if there's an impact to the performance of these funds, we're going to see that impact really, you know, materialize in Q2, the quarter that we're in now.
Yeah, thank you. And the reason I wanted to bring that up is because these are prior to December and I wanted to make sure that people understood that what we're looking here at the investments are not something to be completely alarmed at and I wanted to clarify that.
But this does tie into the stock market, right? I mean, what's going on right now, the current, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I would just add and Yeah, I, I would just add, and this is for the benefit of our council and the members of the, of the city, that um, as a city, we're, we're not uh, allowed to invest in certain type of uh funds or industries or tech company or like anything like that. We're, we're just um investing in certain bonds uh and, and funding in that sort. So um, they are the lowest risk category that uh you're able to jump into as an investment uh um platform. And so we're, I don't anticipate it being uh too drastic, but it's not like if we're putting money in uh highs or down. Right, exactly. So just wanted to inform the, the residents of that.
You, you are correct. It's uh low-risk funds that are uh, you know, highlighted here. It's not cryptocurrency or Doge.
Right.
So, yes.
Great.
Okay, I'll make a motion for uh one and two.
Yeah, first thing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember, uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Avalos left. She stepped out at seven forty-seven, just for the record. Uh, Councilmember Sado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. Great, now we're going to item number three, uh reports and recommendations. Uh, this is, uh, can you read it to the?
Yes.
Thank you.
The city council will consider A, receiving and filing annual military equipment report, B, finding the matter to be exempt under CEQA per section one five zero six one B three of the CEQA guidelines, and C, renewing the Southgate Municipal Code one point three nine point zero one zero military equipment policy. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And uh making the presentation?
Hi, Lieutenant Brown. Yeah, Lieutenant Brown, on behalf of the Southgate Police Department. I'm here asking for approval for our military equipment policy and also to discuss our mil, our annual military equipment report. Back in uh September of twenty-twenty-one, Governor Newsom, he signed Assembly Bill Forty-One, which created Government Code seven seventy, which outlines the parameters for law enforcement agencies to create a military equipment policy. Uh, Government Code seven seventy has a large list of what they deem to be military equipment. Uh, the Southgate Police Department has selected a small amount of these tools, which we deem necessary as uh there's no other uh safe alternative or reasonable alternative that would achieve the same objective or of officer's safety and civilian safety uh regarding these tools. We've been using these tools for almost uh two decades here in the Southgate Police Department. Uh, the Southgate Police Department Policy seven zero nine was created and originally approved by city council back in twenty-twenty-two. This policy requires an annual approval by the city council and for its continued use along with an annual report documenting the use of military equipment. Uh, the twenty-twenty-four annual report was posted on our police department's website on March fifth. This report summarizes twelve incidents where we used military equipment ranging from a drone up to our armored MRAP vehicle. And I'm here to answer any questions regarding that.
Thank you. Uh, any questions before we open up to the members? Okay.
Yeah, uh, how much of our equip, uh, police department equipment is considered military? I mean, what percentage, if you had an estimate? I mean.
Uh, it, it's, that's hard to, to say an estimate of uh the equipment because we have a lot of equipment from radios to police cars.
It's all considered military?
Yes, that is not considered military, but so um.
Only the items that are here?
What's that?
Is it the items only that are here that are considered?
Yeah, so on our policy, we outlaw, or we outline everything that's um covered under Government seventy-seven um as military equipment. This is the stuff that we use in our uh police department.
If I may, uh, Councilmember Rios, uh, the percentage is actually very small because we have an array of equipment that we use for law enforcement purposes. But for the safety equipment that he's talking about, it's a very small percentage.
And, and we do use it if we had to.
Yes, correct.
And thank you for putting some of the examples out here that you have.
Yeah, for twenty-twenty-four, we had twelve instances where we used what's deemed as military equipment, twelve, twelve different incidents.
All right, thank you, Lieutenant. I'd like to go ahead and open up to any member here in the audience if they have any questions or comments. Please state your name.
Oh, yes, it's Chingus, Chingus Dominguez, resident of Southgate. So uh my question to the lieutenant or to uh Captain Adana, uh, it was my first time seeing you, Captain, so it's nice to finally see you, sir. I've heard the name, but I've never seen you before, but nice to see you, sir. Okay, so, you know, I like robots. I would like to be able to see this iRobot Sam Gripper and see what it does. So, well, you know, the chief has the, his horse. Can I ride the robot? Can the robot carry me? I want to see that. All right, so the, uh, when I went through the uh, through the item report, if you can answer this, great, if not, oh, well, maybe the chief knows this, but uh, why does the item report only list twenty-twenty-two incidents of military equipment use and does not include any other years? I just saw a bunch of specific incidents that only detail incidents that took place in twenty-twenty-two and I didn't see any other years.
There, there may be older.
Hold on, let's make sure nobody else is going to uh.
And then the, the second question is um, uh, for one specific incident, the, on October seventeen, twenty-twenty-two, West Frontage Road, a call of a shooting. A man was shot several times. It states in the item report, police uh couldn't apprehend the suspect. Did you ever uh catch the guy? Did the, did the man uh, oh, the, the, did the man who was shot die? Uh, yeah, because uh he was shot several times. So did the, the, the victim, did he, did he die? And the, and the perpetrator, did you ever catch him for the uh October seventeen, twenty-twenty-two West Frontage Road call of a, of a shooting of a man who was shot several times? That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience? Seeing none? Uh, any emails?
No emails.
Thank you. Lieutenant Brown?
So for transparency, we do have, we may have an old report on there from twenty-twenty-two. So there is a twenty-twenty-four report that's on our website, which is current, as current um summaries of incidents that happened during that calendar year.
Okay, so yeah, that, I do see that the report does say uh twenty-twenty-two on there, so if there's an updated one, we may want to uh make sure that we update the, the website with the.
I've, I've checked and it, when I, it shows me twenty-twenty-four. There may be other reports on there.
I think in the paper, um, council report, it has the old report, but on the website is where we put the updated reports, the twenty-twenty-four, I believe.
Uh, because I'm, I'm looking it up right now on the website and it's still the twenty-twenty-two report. So if we can just, if.
We'll review that and refresh it.
Please.
As needed. Okay.
And that would, that would uh kind of solve that, uh, the issue there.
I do have information to answer his question about the shooting that happened at the uh Thunderbird Villa. Um, he is correct, going back to twenty-twenty-two, uh, there was a subject that uh came in and shot another, another person. Uh, that person did die and eventually we did catch the uh, the, the suspect, who was a resident at the Thunderbird Villa.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, any more comments or questions from council?
But in case he was concerned about my safety, I was okay.
Thank you.
No.
All right.
I'll, I'll make a motion to uh, it's a receiving file, so A, B, and C.
Second.
Thank you. We have first, second, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number four, please.
Thank you.
The city council will consider approving the warrant register for April eighth, twenty-twenty-five. The grand total is four million, five hundred, seventy-five thousand, six hundred, forty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. The cancellations are one zero four eight one three, one zero four eight two six, one zero four eight two seven, one zero four eight five one, one zero four eight five seven, one zero four eight eight four, one zero five zero two one, one zero five two nine eight, one zero five six five six, one zero five eight one nine, one zero five eight two zero, one zero five eight two nine, one zero five eight seven five, one zero five eight seven six, one zero five nine two four, one zero five nine three nine, and one zero nine four four nine. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Um. Yes, Vice Mayor, um, staff would like to pull several invoices to complete additional review from one of the vendors and before we bring it back. And those invoices, also there's three, they all, they all have the number of three, four, five, five, nine, two. One is dash A, the other is dash B, and the other is dash C. So we would like to pull those and bring those back at a future time.
Okay, I'll make a note of that. Thank you. Uh, any member here in the audience would like to make a question or comment regarding the warrant register? Seeing none, bring it back to uh city clerk?
We have no emails.
Okay, seeing none. Uh, what are the wishes of council?
Second.
We have a first and second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just before we adjourn, uh, just so the records clear, Councilwoman Avalos, I believe, left at seven forty-eight PM is when she was excused for the evening and did not participate in any subsequent discussions after that.
I'm, I'm so sorry, I have seven forty-seven, I stated that earlier.
Okay, I'll give you a minute, thank you. And thank you. And then um, um, Councilwoman Avalos requested that we adjourn uh in the memory of Manuel Rivera, a uh long-term uh resident of the city of Southgate who, who passed away. So we will do that uh for her and adjourn in, in his memory.
We have a motion by Mr. Sado.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Good night.